Ron Tropoli will not be here, so Joe Clark is going to start the meeting for us.
Okay, yeah, we'll go ahead and start.
Okay, everybody's ready to go. I'd like to call this meeting of the Howell Township zoning board of adjustment to order. Time is 7:05. Rubano, if you could read the opening statement, please.
Sure. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township zoning board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tredown News. Second, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 14th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding, and any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video. You will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in on your phone, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand, and star six to mute or unmute yourself. Thank you.
Okay. The second order of business we have is the administration of oaths. I have the oath for Mr. Hughes before me, and if he would raise his right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Matthew Hughes.
I, Matthew Hughes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of the zoning board.
Of the office of the zoning board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will support.
I'm sorry, sir, can you repeat?
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Hughes, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Did a good job.
Thank you. I look forward to another great four years.
Well, we look forward to having you.
Thank you.
Okay, can we do the roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Cantor?
Present.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Yeah.
Mr. Moretti is absent. Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. Seiya?
Yeah.
Mr. Stanton has been excused, and Mr. Gonzalez has been excused. Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, so I don't have a flag, but we will do the pledge of allegiance, so. Hand over the heart and repeat after me.
Everybody can stand.
I was saying, we'll look at your flag.
Flag of the United States.
United States of America.
And to the Republic.
One nation, unbroken, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the reorganization. If I could have a motion for chairman.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Mr. Nansen to be the chairman of the board.
Okay, the motion is for Mr. Nansen as chairman. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, sir.
We've a roll call vote on that, Ms. Rubano.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes, thank you very much.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you for all of y'all's support there, guys. You know, it wouldn't be a board without all of y'all. And I'm telling you, I feel for as many years as I've been doing it, you know, this is one of the strongest boards I've had ever. And I tell you, I think all of y'all are individual thinkers, and I really thank you for that.
We thank you for your guidance and your leadership, sir.
Oh, it couldn't be without y'all. Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. I really appreciate your assistance here.
It is my pleasure.
Okay, sir. Do I have a motion for vice chair, please?
Members of the board, I'd like to nominate Paul Seiya as vice chairman. You got big, he has big shoes to fill when you're not around Mr. Chairman, but he does a great job, and I'd like to see him continue.
I'd love to second, I'd love to second that, sir.
Okay, second by Mr. Hughes. Now, I, guys, I'm off a screen here. I know y'all can see me, but I can't see you, so can I, can we have a roll call, please?
Or Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
Welcome there, Paul. I say, you know, we started this journey a long time ago, you and I both. And I, it's been a pleasure, and I look forward to it again.
Amen, sir, and to fellow board members and professionals that are there. We, we still have a lot to accomplish, and I'm grateful that you put your trust in me to allow us to conduct these proceedings as Eileen so elegantly puts out in a semi-judicial manner, so. You know, and, you know, and I second Mr. Nansen's opinion that you are individual thinkers, and we couldn't do this if we didn't all have our own opinions, so I greatly appreciate and trust all of your input. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, a board secretary, do I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Richard Mertens for secretary, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Mertens. Do I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Absolutely, yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
Again, I welcome Mr. Mertens again, you know, as individual, everybody puts together to have this board, and I, thank you.
I want to thank everybody for nominating and voting me back. You know, one thing about COVID, it's made my job a little bit easier as secretary. But I'd rather be back going down signing, you know, the, what do you call those?
You're not getting as much exercise, I guess.
I know. Drawback, but anyway, it could be back, we'd be back with everybody.
Well, we thank you, we welcome you back. Okay, consulting attorney, do I have a nomination?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Mr. Clark for some advice.
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Can we nominate two? That, you know, attorneys are only one.
One. One typically, because you don't, we don't have alternates for the board.
Got it. Okay, then, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to nominate Mr. Andy Baer, Pushman, Hashman, Stein, Walden, and Hayden to be the long-term board attorney over.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second? Hello?
Can I ask a question before?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion, and I heard somebody asked for a question.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, is Mr. Tropoli no longer interested in that position?
At least.
Yeah, he, he is not put in. He's, I don't think, I don't know.
But he didn't put in for it, okay.
Yeah, he did put in for it.
Oh, he did?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? I, I'm not.
It answers my question, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so he did put in for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, do, I have a motion and a second. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
No.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
I'm going to vote no also, but there's reasonings behind it, but. Baer, you're, you're voted in?
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Baer? Is, is he online yet?
I am here.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board, board members, for their support. I do look forward to getting to know everyone and work with you this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I gotta switch back out of this. Okay, consulting engineer, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Like to nominate T and M Associates, Charles Cunliffe, as the representative. So be it.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second for Andy.
Okay. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yeah.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome back, Charlie.
He's coming in. There he is.
Sorry about that, a little bit of delay on my end. Welcome back. Mr. Chairman of Board, thank you very much. I'd just like to say thanks again for your continued support, and I look forward to serving you for one more year. You know, I appreciate, you know, everything that this board does. You know, there's a lot of thing, a lot of time and effort that you guys dedicate, you know, on a yearly basis that kind of, you know, people take for granted. So I just want to commend all you again for another start of a, hopefully another fine year with the board.
Thank you, sir.
Charlie, I'd like to tell you that I am so proud that you have stormwater management as a pet peeve of yours, because how important it is across this nation, never mind just New Jersey. You know, with all the construction and all of the, you know, the climate that's taking place. We certainly need to do a better job at what we do, and I know you're the right guy for the job.
I know. I think anyone that reads any of my review letters know that's one of the underscored items in it. So I'll hopefully keep, you know, marching to that drum.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Consultant planner?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a motion for Leon Avakian, AKA Jennifer Beam, as the representative, to be the board planner.
Okay, you have a motion, Leon Avakian, Jennifer, as the planter, and do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Mertens. Do I have a real roll call?
Mr. Cantor? I'm sorry.
Did I put on a goofy mustache or something?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Most people do laugh when they say my name, yes.
I have somebody over here laughing, and they're driving me crazy. Sorry, go ahead. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes, absolutely.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Beam.
Thank you very much for another fun-filled year, guys.
Welcome back.
You know, Ms. Beam, we're, we got our fingers crossed by the springtime, so you're going to have a nice, you know, congestion plan for us.
Yes, it will be before then, trust me. It'll be before then. So yes, thank you guys so much.
Okay.
And can I say to Jennifer and Charlie, thank you very much for your expertise into helping me learn about land use and zoning in particular. You know, you guys explained this in a way that I can understand it, and thank you for that.
Of course, that's why we're here.
That's us pull it together.
Go inside.
Okay, certified tree expert.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to nominate CMA Associates, AKA Sherry Spiro, as our certified licensed tree expert.
I second that, sir.
Okay, motion and seconded by Mr. Hughes. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome back, Sherry. Is she on?
She is.
Hurry to pop up.
There she is.
Welcome back, Sherry.
You're muted.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the support.
So we appreciate you giving us the expert, tree expert that we get from your department there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wonder how many years it's going to take to get our canopy up to the sixty, sixty percent ratio that we were in 1990.
They keep tearing it down for solar.
Yeah. But Sherry, thank you.
You gotta do some planting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Administrative officer? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to put Eileen Rubano into that seat, please.
Yes, sir.
I'll second it, sir.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Absolutely.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I, Eileen, I can't begin to tell you how many years they, you're just beyond our idiocy's ability so far.
Thank you.
I, we really do need you, and we, that little part of the time that you missed here, you were, you were very, very broadly missed. But, you know, we did have a good, good person, you know. I mean, took, took your place. Not as good as you could, but I tell you, you know, made it less, miss, you know.
Less painful. We got it done.
Got it done.
Thank you.
My speech, I have a hard time now. Recording secretary? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So Eileen is the administrative officer, and then the recording secretary would be Eileen Rubano.
Yep.
Okay.
I second that.
You want to make Rich Mertens because he's missing all that work.
I'll learn how to bake a cake, then.
All right.
Okay, we, we have Eileen, and do I have a second?
I'll second that, sir.
Okay.
Roll call?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Twenty-two meeting dates, resolution.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um. I briefly looked at the, what Eileen had put out. I'd like to know from my board members, are we all in concurrence with the dates? Or is there anybody that have any additions, adjustments?
It's good to me.
I'm good.
And it's good to you?
Yep, I'm good.
Rich, good to you?
Yep.
Okay, well then, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to prove, a resolution to approve the twenty-two and two, the two zero two two zoning board of adjustment meeting dates.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Okay, official newspaper?
Official newspapers for the township are the Asbury Park Press, the Tredown News, and the Star Ledger, so we follow them.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Okay, site review committee, Mr. Hughes? Or you've been the chairman this year. Do you like to come? Complete that, or?
Absolutely. If the rest of the board is up for it, I'm up for the challenge.
Okay.
I think we're going to have to think about that, Matt.
All right, I get you.
Now that you're reappointed, that's a no-brainer.
Okay. Mr. Mertens, would you want to be on there and also?
Mr. Cantor may want to be on there.
That's what I wanted, was going to ask, Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Okay, um. Let me, let me ask, do we, do we do this by motion, or is that just the chairman?
That's the chairman's appointment.
Okay. Okay, and then the rules committee?
Of course, you, Chairman Nansen.
Rules committee, yeah. Chairman, the vice chair, and the secretary will be those positions.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any organization that we need to do?
That's it for the reorganization.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, getting back to the nominations, I wanted to make a comment on my no vote for Mr. Mayor. It was nothing to do with Mr. Mayor. I was not aware that we had other nominations, so that's the only reason I did vote no on his nomination for our attorney.
Okay. Yeah, he, he got approved.
Okay, well, I didn't see his name, so that's the only reason, so.
Oh, okay.
I'm here, I'm here.
Yeah. He's there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So we're going to start to move forward with the agenda, then?
Yes, we're going to start to move forward with the agenda. I'm going to turn the meeting over to you. I'm going to sit back and, you know, I, I'm having a procedure this week, and, you know, they're changing my pacemaker. So some, sometimes I get a little confused, and, and so, you know, I know what it is that I'm thinking, but my, my words don't come out right, so I'm going to turn it over to Paul, and I'm going to stay in the meeting, and we'll just get her done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, first and foremost, you know, I want to thank Joe Clark for getting us kicked off here and leading us down this reorganization, and, and Mr. Clark, are you going to remain with us for the remainder of the, of the session?
Uh, no, sir. I'm going to drop off now and leave it in the capable hands of Mr. Baer. I just want to make sure that we were, we were off to a good start, and, you know, it's, it's the zoning board, so you guys know what you're doing probably way better than I do, so thank you much for having me, and happy new year to everybody, and appreciate your time tonight, and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Okay, take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to hit, hit the silent over here, and I'm going to put you back up on the screen, so.
Okay.
Take care of it.
So, regular meeting is going, is kicking off here. Item number one is the approval of the past minutes. Regular meeting, September 13th, 2021. Oh, we need a swearing in of the.
Yeah, you have swearing in of your, of the zoning board professionals. I apologize for interrupting.
All right, Mr. Baer, you got it.
Does anyone come over, gets warned?
Is that usually done collectively or individually?
All together.
Okay, I state your name.
Hi, John.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially and justly?
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of your position?
Of zoning board planner.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
My ability.
My ability. And I will support the Constitution
That'll support the Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
Maybe I think you froze.
Allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United
We lost them.
Into the government.
I'm here.
The States. Can you hear me or no?
Now I can.
Yes.
To the governments of which establish. Is it me? Is it just me? Because he's frozen. My internet sucks, so I'm just
No, he's still, he can't
Okay.
All right, he's gonna
Might need to repeat the last line because I forgot.
Isn't that one much longer than what we normally do?
Well, I think it's like the initial swearing in, I guess, and then usually it's like, you know, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes, I do.
This, this is the, the whole.
Okay. Oh, right, because they're reappointed, reappointed, yeah, okay, okay.
Hold on.
Eileen, you're going to work on getting him back in? Okay.
Yes.
He signs back in.
There you are. We lost you.
You're muted. There you go.
I guess, and we, and we said, and to the governments established in the United, in this state.
To the governments established in the United States, in the state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Help me God.
Oh, God.
Congratulations. Sorry about the Wi-Fi.
That's okay.
Okay, so Mr. Bear, we have our professionals that are sworn in, being Charles Cunliffe, Jennifer Beam, John Aguilar.
Shari.
Shari.
Yeah, so you can proceed with the regular business, uh, now.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Okay, board members, approval of minutes. Regular meeting, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Eligible voters, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, and Seiya.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Stack on.
We got a first and a second. Hughes, Orozco, Eileen?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Regular meeting, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Eligible voters, Mertens, Moretti, Seiya, and Nansen. Well.
Make a motion.
Mr. Nansen makes a motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Mertens? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr., uh, Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You got it. Eileen, any vouchers?
I have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondence?
I do have correspondence. I have an email from Patrick Ward. He is the engineer for Matthew Lynn, which is the last case on tonight's agenda. And the press actually did not publish their notice in time, so their application has to be rescheduled if you just want to make an announcement for members of the public that he will not be heard this evening.
Hey, members of the public, for those who are waiting for case number BA twenty-one dash twenty-six, Matthew Lynn. This was a use variance and a preliminary and final major site plan. This me, this
That's actually an error. It should just be a bulk variance.
It's a bulk variance. Okay, so correction for the record, it's a bulk variance only.
Yes.
And it is being carried to a future date?
With notice.
With notice. Eileen, the next one?
The next, I have a letter from Stephen Melneck. He is the attorney for case number BA twenty dash one seventeen, which is also on tonight's agenda. It's New Jersey Solar Two Thousand LLC. He asked that this application be carried on the record without further notice to February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. And he also granted the board an extension of time to hear the application through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. So for those members of the public, case number BA twenty dash one seventeen, New Jersey Solar Two Thousand LLC. This meeting, this application is being carried to March?
Nope, February twenty-eighth.
February twenty-eighth with a, um, extension of time till March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Correct. Okay, and the last item I have is a letter from attorneys, uh, hold on one second. Sarah Warner, she works for Crime and Tuvo. They are the attorneys for all the Wawa's in town. And back when the Wawa on Route thirty-three was approved, they had a condition on the approval that they had to get groundwater quality monitoring. And the letter, they have asked if that condition could be discontinued.
Um, you know, I have, I have feelings on that.
But, Mr. Chair, respectfully, if it's a condition of their resolution, they have to come back and request formally the condition be removed, and they have to notice. They can't just get, they can't do that administratively. That's not how it works.
No.
Understood. You know, we, uh, I was on the board when that application came through the first time. And, um, there was a problem because of the residence on those big lots right behind it. And, um, you know, the, the big berm that we put up there to try to reduce the noise in the sightline of the, of the lights and so forth. You know, we put a lot of conditions in, and the conditions then were acceptable and good for us. So I'd like, if, Eileen, if if you want to act upon that letter, then please advise them based on what Ms. Beam has stated, is that they need to come in front of the board again.
Okay, will do. Would that be considered an amended application? No, just they, they're coming back for relief of the condition. Okay. I will get in contact with them tomorrow. Thank you. And that's all the, uh, correspondence I have.
Thank you. Resolutions, we already did the, the dates for the meeting, right?
Yes, I have no other resolutions.
Okay, so then what we have in front of the board then this evening is application, case number BA twenty dash one zero four F, as in Frank, VC Twenty-four LLC. Final major site plan.
That's Attorney, Attorney Neil Yoskin is in the meeting.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Hi, Eileen.
Hi, how are you?
Happy New Year, everyone, and congratulations on your reorganization. This is an application for a final major site plan approval with previously granted, uh, variances and, uh, both the use variance and bulk variance and waivers for what's known as a battery energy storage system. Um, it's a, it's a system that's used to store energy that's taken from the grid and then to feed it back into the grid uh, to smooth out fluctuations in the grid. It's commonly known as, as a, as a type of smart grid technology, and it's, uh, it's an important feature um, as we try and make our, uh, grid system more resilient. This board granted, uh, preliminary major final site plan approval back on January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, one year ago tomorrow. Uh, there were two variances. One is for two principal uses on the same property. Uh, this facility will be located immediately behind the Howell Solar Facility on Farming, on Lakewood Farmingdale Road. And, uh, the, uh, my client is leasing land from Howell Solar, so you had the two uses on the same site. And it's also not a permitted use in the ARE six zone. So the board granted that requested relief. Um, I have two witnesses tonight who can testify to, uh, the manner in which the application complies with the conditions that were imposed by the board. One is Christopher Nuffer, Nussar, who's a professional engineer and professional planner. And Mr. Nussar testified as an expert in civil engineering and planning back in the January twenty twenty-one hearing. Uh, my second witness is Brian Smith, who's an operational manager with the parent company of Vessi Twenty-four, who can talk about any operational aspects that the board may have questions about. I wouldn't expect the board to remember you did have a lot of questions a year ago. And at that time, my client's staff, electrical engineer David Kearney, uh, testified to matters such as how it, how a facility operates. The role it plays, light, noise, uh, impacts on surrounding properties and, uh, things like that, so. Uh, to Mr. Bear and Ms. Rubino, uh, we've provided, I believe we've provided the required notices, and I'd ask the board to take jurisdiction.
Notice was in order.
Thank you. Um, with that, I'd like to, uh, bring Mr. Nussar up.
Good evening, everybody.
Could, uh, Mr. Nussar be sworn?
Mr. Bear? You're on now, Mr. Bear. Mr. Bear, you're still on?
You're still muted.
Sorry, like, having computer issues tonight. I do solemnly swear, I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Chris Nussar, do solemnly swear.
That I will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
That I will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
And while we're at it, do we want to also swear in Brian Smith?
Sure. Mr. Smith? I, I'm Smith, do solemnly swear.
I'm Brian Smith, do solemnly swear.
That I will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
That I will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. So, Mr. Chair, what I'd like, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Nussar identify himself. But then I'm going to ask that the board accept his credentials as an expert since it did so on this application previously. So, Mr. Nussar, if you could just remind the board by whom you are employed and what your professional licenses are?
Sure, uh, it's Christopher Nussar and U S S E R with Engineering and Land Planning Associates, one forty West Main Street, Hybridge, New Jersey. I am a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and those licenses remain in good standing.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Nussar, what I'd like you to do is briefly describe, uh, for the board what the, the project is, and feel free to call up any plans that you need to call up. Uh, Ms. Robano was able to provide us with the exhibit list. And, um, I'd ask you to describe the project's principal features, and then if you could walk through the, uh, November first, twenty twenty-one compliance review letter from, uh, T and M Associates, and then we have a planner's review letter of December eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Absolutely. Uh, so, it, I see all faces that I remember from a year ago. So, I'm hopeful that, uh, everybody kind of remembers where we are with this site. We had left off with final last time, uh, because we did not have final DEP approval, and we wanted to make sure that the stormwater would be approved by the state before we could get that final approval. Uh, so by way of that, obviously, we're here, which means we have that approval from the DEP. Uh, they did approve our stormwater, and so that paperwork is all in order and was provided to the board as part of our application. I'm going to share my screen, and this is a six on the exhibit list, which is the site plan set. Just on page three here, I'm going to be fairly brief. If somebody wants me to go into some greater detail on anything, please stop me and let me know. And I will be happy to do that. Um, so, as Mr. Yashkin stated, uh, the site is located here in the rear of the property, known as Block Forty-two, Lot Thirty-six on Lakewood Farmingdale Road, which is County Route five forty-seven. It is located immediately behind, uh, the existing Howard, Howell Solar using the same access point to reach this facility. The facility the facility is, let's say basically the same, uh, within all the conditions of what you approved for preliminary. However, there's been some modifications to to the layout based on some supply chain issues. Uh, basically, the equipment that was being specified, uh, is not as available as it had been. And so there's been a change in the equipment on the pads. Uh, the dimensions of the facility limits, the fence, are identical. The concrete pad in the center is the exact same size and the exact same location. The gates are in the same locations. The interconnection path is identical. Uh, the difference is where previously we had, uh, three battery cabinet units, battery energy storage system units. We had three of them, and they were going, um, south to north on the pad, so they were going facing east to west, and there were three of them. Uh, we now only have two, uh, these two larger cabinets. So instead of three smaller ones, we have two larger ones, uh, with their, each one's associated, uh, inverter transformer setup located uh, closer towards the switchgear control panel, and then it goes again back out to the grid. So from a difference perspective, the, they're no taller than what was previously submitted. Uh, in fact, I believe they're slightly shorter overall in height. But again, we're kind of tucked away in the back of the site and really didn't have any visibility concerns. Uh, was one of the reasons why we felt this site was so appropriate for this use, that it could be tucked away. Um, so again, no, no taller. Uh, one of the other concerns is Mr. Yashkin, uh, had, uh, noted was noise, the sound generated by it. Uh, we had supplied the board with our submission, um, a study that was commissioned by the applicant. Uh, that was prepared by Burns and McDonald. And that study showed that we stay in compliance with, uh, all the regulated uh, limits for the sound generation by the facility. Um, otherwise, there's, uh, a couple things that have been added to here that you'll note if you compare the two plans. There's some additional pieces of equipment that were, um, previously housed in other locations. There's an auxiliary transformer, an auxiliary switchboard, uh, and a communication box. Those are, um, for driving the actual site facilities. So where there's an inverter and there's a transformer for the electricity that's coming in and out of the battery system, there's lighting on the site, uh, there's HVAC units for the battery cabinets. You know, those, those basic functions of the site, excuse me, that transformer, uh, and that equipment is there to help run that onsite all those onsite features. Uh, the other things that have been included here are, uh, lightning rods at the Uh, the other things that have been included here are, uh, lightning rods at the corners of the pad located one in each corner. Uh, that is, I think, pretty self-explanatory while that's being, uh, included at this time. You know, it's as a result of, uh, knowledge gained, let's say, uh, it is appropriate to include them, uh, on, on the facility. Again, otherwise, the facility, the access, um, the operation of the facility, all that remains the same. It was simply a changing out of the equipment uh, on the pad, no change again to the pad itself.
This, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, is Mr. Nasser, the, these lightning rods, are, are they gonna attach to anything other than the equipment in this compound?
Um, how do you mean, sir?
Well, are they gonna roll over in like fencing or anything to deal with other than this compound?
No, they're specifically for this facility.
Okay. Okay.
And you're gonna, and you're gonna drive it, them down into the ground as according to, uh, to the technical standards of the, of the rod itself and so forth?
Oh, yes, yeah, there's, there's a whole grounding array that goes with the electrical design of the system. So this is incorporated into that
Okay.
setup.
Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in, I want to ask you a couple of clarifying questions from Mr. Nasser. Um, are, are you or Mr. Smith, um, gonna be able to talk about the capacity of the batteries? You know, I know you said there was a reduction from three to two. I'm just wondering if the capacity for the system as a whole has remained the same, or is there additional capacity with this changed layout? And then also, um, you know, there was a revised sound study that was provided. The levels of the sound, while they do adhere, uh, to the fifty decibel D B A max to the solar property line, uh, to the, to the res- residential receptor there, um, it does go over the fifty limit to the northernly property line. Uh, and it is higher, you know, by, on a range of five to ten D B A, you know, uh, comparatively, um, so what was previously proposed to the board. I just want to know what the, wha- what causes this change in the sound level? And whether there is any additional mitigation or measures that can be taken to, you know, um, kind of to, to reduce it to what back what it was. This was a use variance application, you know, um, you know, there, there are residential properties. There were some people that did come out to the prior year, and I just want to make sure that this board is, you know, covered, uh, with any potential site, site changes that they're considering at this time.
Sure. Uh, so to the first question about capacity, there is no increase in the capacity. Uh, again, that's governed by the PJM approval by the Q position. There's a limit to much, what the facility can, can do. Um, so we can't go more because the approval doesn't allow more from the utility side of things. Uh, so again, we have less. We have two containers instead of three. They're larger containers, so there's more batteries in each container, but at the end of the day, the output is the same. Uh, from the sound perspective, yes, it does go over on the property to the north, which is this property here. Uh, it's over fifty D B I. Uh, that property is, uh, publicly owned, preserved land. Uh, this is a trying to think how wide it is, but it's probably about five hundred feet of repair and buffer that's protected, uh, that extends from that property line going to the north. Uh, so there's really no opportunity for there to be development or for there to be a receptor of any kind in that area. Um, the again, to the area to the south, uh, right on that property line, which going back to the sheet, the receptors about here in this location, um, where it's under fifty D B I, uh, the fifty line is within the property. And realistically, as you get to any of the any dwelling unit or anything like that, you're getting, uh, down below forty-five D B I. Uh, the change, the changes from the change in equipment, it's really the HVAC that drives a lot of the sound on the site. So the sound study, as I understand it, is the HVAC running at peak capacity and all of it running together at peak capacity. Uh, so it's kind of a I'll call it a unicorn event, uh, but it is, it is a rare event for, uh, you know, for the sound to reach those levels. Uh, generally speaking, levels stay below that on a night like night. Probably gonna be run very little, uh, but yeah, in the, the middle of the summer, uh, probably on the hottest day, you'll get them cranking away a little bit more, and that's when you're more likely to have, uh, an event where you come close to that.
Does, does, is there any, uh, available like cabinet or additional housing that could be provided for those units just to, you know, reduce the, the, the noise level back to what was previously proposed? I just want to, like I said, it, you, you, you can go, Mr. Say.
So would it be wise to not put the fence around, but put sound wall containment or in place of the fence around the, uh, the batteries and the, and the equipment? I mean, some prefabbed stuff, maybe?
Well, again, the, the sound levels are compliant, uh, to the standard. Uh, you know, this was a study, the study that was provided was a study that was based upon the sound generated by the facility. It doesn't take into account, um, the background's levels of sound, um, generally speaking in more rural areas like this, um, you know, I've done, we haven't done one here, but I'll say a number of studies, uh, that, on sites that I've worked on for, say, solar facilities that have been in rural areas out here in Hunterdon County where I currently am. You know, even the, the average daytime sound levels somewhere around the forty, forty-three, um, and, and so.
But Mr. Nasser, we're not talking about the solar panels themselves. We're talking about the batteries, right?
Yes, oh, yes, sir. Um, and what I'm saying is, is from a background standpoint, a general background level of noise that could be expected in a rural area such as this would be around forty, forty-three decibels. And so, you know, if we're forty-five at a residence, two decibels at that point is really within basically the, the same level of noise that the background does.
If, if I could, uh, chime in, this is Mr. Yaskin. Um, I'd just like to uh, make two points in response to the suggestion about a sand wall. One is that might well make sense if there were the potential for receptors in the area of concern, but again, um, this is all, uh, publicly owned, open space to the north. And so there, there's no likelihood that there will be, uh, the kind of receptors you worry about. And secondly, I think that the fire department might be concerned about solid sound barriers. One of the reasons you have open fences around facilities like this is so that they can be observed from the outside uh, for security reasons, and that, um, the worst case, if you have to fight a fire, you can stay outside the, the fence and fight it. So I think sound walls are inadvisable for that reason.
I mean, I think that's two different arguments, right? The fire department is not gonna fight crime. That's a police issue.
That's correct, two different issues.
But, you know, and the solid fence, I don't think if it was providing access would preclude the fire department from fighting a fire. So I, I do think that Mr. Seiya brings up a, a valid point that, you know, you're here, you know, and you're obviously not as upright, otherwise you wouldn't be here, and noise is a concern. So I think you should stick with what's around and what the decimal levels are and how, you know, I mean, what your max decimal levels are and what time of day you anticipate that and how that's going to impact the surrounding land uses.
Yeah, and so, Mr. Chair, uh, just, just to reiterate, so, so in the revised sound study that they provided, it does show to the cellular property line that the closest receptor that they are compliant with the fifty D B A nighttime threshold, that's the state and our, and our township ordinance. Um, but it is approximately, you know, and I don't have the exact dot number. Um, I want to say in the order of, you know, five to ten decibels higher than what was presented to the board. You know, obviously, it was a use variance. There was members of the public. I, I do believe that, that, that property owner to the south was present at the hearing. So, you know, if there's any additional measures that, you know, within reason, the applicant would be willing to introduce, you know, to the site that might mitigate any potential concerns from, you know, those, uh, you know, neighbors to the south, had they, you know, um, seen that change at the time that there was a, before the board, I, I, you know, I'd recommend that the applicant, you know, uh, put their thinking hat on and, and see if they can come up with something before we.
We could, we could talk about that, but I don't understand your concern because it's compliant to the south.
Can I also, can I add something in here? And I, I think, uh, Ms. Beam was leading towards it a little bit in here in her comment. One of the things to keep in mind is the fifty decibels is the nighttime limit.
Yes.
And the air conditioning is cranking in the daytime in the heat of the sun. When the decimal limit is higher, it's up at sixty-five. Uh, nighttime, this is going to be running quieter, it's going to be running less. And so this is worst case scenario, again, daytime, summertime, when it's hottest, uh, you know, running at that maximum level. And at night, it's going to be running at a lower level. Do I have that exact number for you? No, but it complies at its, at its worst. It complies at nighttime, but at nighttime, it's going to be operating below that.
So, so I think, Mr. Yaskin, just to further your comment, I think the bottom line is this, we need testimony, and I think, you know, what was provided by Mr. Nasser is pretty much there that the change in what you're providing in that compound, which was granted a use variance, which shows no negative impact to the surrounding land uses, that the noise, the increased potential noise from what you're proposing now is not gonna change the condition to the surrounding land uses, which is, which went into the approval. Cause if it changes, then, you know, we have an issue with the fact that this is not just final, this is an amended use variance, which has not been noticed for. So that's, I think, where Mr. Conliff was coming from, is that you've changed the equipment, which has changed the situ- situation, and we need to make sure that the impact, that the public who came out the last time who had a potential issue with this is not going to be further in, you know, impacted by this change.
Um, let me respond in two ways, and one is to ask Mr. Nasser, which I'm asking out loud, if he's in a position to offer that testimony. Uh, another way to, to deal with this, because these are worst case analyses. Um, I believe we would be, um, amenable to a condition in the approval that once this facility's up and running, we would do some sound monitoring at maximum operating conditions. And if, um, it indicated that there was a problem, then we could propose a mitigation measure, which would most likely be vinyl fencing. It wouldn't be a solid wall.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cantor.
A question for, uh, Mr. Nasser. How does the, the fifty decibels compare to a common sound that one would recognize?
Uh, that's a good question. I don't have that fun little chart in front of me right now.
In a residential air conditioner like my house has to my neighbors or something louder, softer?
So I'll, I'll give you, there actually is a table in the report, so I, I take it back. I just was looking at the wrong page. So, um, you know, forty decibels indoors is soft stereo music in a residence, um, is what it's listed, you know, what it says in here. Um, I think normal conversations around the forty-five. Fifty decibels would be something, it's labeled as quiet, uh, a private office, sixty decibels being a general office, uh, a moderate sound level outdoors, it would be an air conditioning condenser fifteen feet away. Or if you're near highway traffic, you know, then you start getting up to things that are louder, seventy decibels, close conversation or vacuum cleaner if you're indoors. In the, in the example here, it's the, the cabin of a Boeing seven fifty-seven during a flight.
Chris, could you re, you, could you repeat what the value is for an air conditioning condenser at fifteen feet?
That is sixty decibels.
Thank you. That, that pretty much explains it.
So, to, so that, um, again, it has changed over what was previously submitted over the, or should I say, over the prior layout, uh, there is no, there's no change to, I think, the conclusion that was reached, that this is compliant and will not have a negative impact upon the adjoining property owners.
Mr. Nasser? You know, the growing seasons are getting longer. The temperatures are rising. Whether it be so little, um, you know, air conditioners are going to be running longer in the, in, in the summertime. We're going to be peaking for a longer period of time is what I'm saying. I don't think what you're saying is, you know, it's this anomaly just one, one or two days. Um, noise is a concern. And.
Mr. Say, I can just project before we go too much farther, like a general school of thumb, fifty decibels is like the sound of an electric toothbrush. That's fifty decibels. Sixty decibels is like a normal conversation that you and I would have. Like, let's say we, you and I were standing in your backyard having a conversation, that's sixty decibels. So I'm not trying to influence you one way or the other, but I'm just representing, number one, the threshold during the day is sixty-five D B I, not fifty. Fifty is the nighttime from ten P M to seven A M, when it's dark generally. Um, so I just, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole of sound too much because fifty, you know, it sounds like a lot, but generally, like, if you turn your electric toothbrush in your bathroom on at night, that's fifty decibels. It's not even the sound of your TV on a loud volume. So we need to like, and looking at where it's located to get to a sensitive receptor, which would be a residential home, I have to say, I don't think that the change in the equipment is going to have a significant impact, if at all, from a sound standpoint.
Okay, Charlie?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to bring it up, but you know, obviously, it was a use variance. I just wanted to make sure it was, you know, thoroughly vetted and talked about by the board, obviously, to make sure that, uh, you know, there weren't any changes being made, uh, you know, under the radar that might be, uh, you know, concerning to, to, to adjoining properties. You know, I wasn't, certainly wasn't suggesting, uh, you know, a significant sound wall, but, you know, whether there could be an alternate cabinet, you know, for the units or maybe some evergreen plantings along the south side of the, you know, of the, of the, um, the fenced area mi- might give some additional sound attenuation. So I, you know, maybe there's a compromise, or if the board thinks that this has been beaten to, uh, you know, to a pulp, then, uh, you know, I'll defer to the board members.
Well, you, you know, Charlie, Mr. Yaskin mentioned maybe vinyl fencing versus, you know, wired see-through fencing, so.
Well, I mentioned it, it's a possibility, and again, the, the vinyl fencing does the same thing that a solid wall does, which is it blocks views. So um, let's assume, we're talking about worst case scenarios. Let's assume a deer jumps over the fence, is six feet tall and has barbed wire, but deer being deer, let's assume a wild animal gets in there. Chews on the wrong thing, steps on the wrong thing, trips the system. Uh, an employee has to go out and see what's going on. That first look is more desirable from the outside of the facility.
Okay, so let's, let's, I'm gonna stop you. It is way in the back of this site, so an employee is not going to be on an adjoining property six, seven hundred feet off the road looking in. They're going to be looking off the road. They're not going to be able to see it, whether it's a solid.
No, no.
Not.
No, no.
You're gonna have to go in.
You miss, you misunderstand me. If the telemetry says there's a problem with the system, then an employee is going to be, respond, it's gonna, they're gonna unlock the lockbox out front, they're gonna drive through the facility
Yeah.
back to, through the solar facility, back to this facility to see what's wrong.
Okay, so, and, and your pad is minimally sized. So if there's a problem, they're going to go in the facility. So I don't, I don't subscribe to that. That's, that's not really a legitimate. that's not really a legitimate concern. Your, your equipment takes up ninety-nine percent of the area. So if it's a solid fence, which could mitigate some sound, which the board is concerned about, under the odd chance that some random wild animal may jump into this ridiculously small area to, and create this massive problem, which somebody can't figure out. I, I just think that that's.
Well, we, we do, look, we do have Mr., we do have Mr. Smith with us, who's the operational manager, and he's probably the person who's better uh, equipped to address the board on this issue. But again, I just want to remind the board that to the south and, and, and Mr. Conliff was concerned about receptors, to the south, the, the application meets the standard. So it's not an issue to the south. It's only an issue to the north. And noise is only an issue when there's somebody there to hear it. And there's nobody there to hear it.
Respectfully, the standard is the standard. It doesn't matter if someone hears it or not. It's if it's, uh, if it can be, if it could potentially be heard by a sensitive receptor, it's an issue. Doesn't mean that someone needs to be standing there. And let's be honest, you're here at the zoning board, like you're not as an as of right application. And I, I mean, I just really feel like you guys are pushing back ridiculously on something that would be easily solved by a solid fence. I mean, you're here for final, this should be relatively straightforward. You changed the equation from when you came in initially. This was, this is a change from when you came in. We could take the position that you've made a significant change. You need a new use variance. We're trying to work with you here. I, so I, 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 listen respectfully, I don't understand the resistance. You could bring up whomever you want. I support Charlie in this. If he feels that a solid fence and, and I would venture to guess that Mr. Say is going to be of the same mindset. I would respectfully, strongly encourage you to put a solid fence up, and then we can move on from the issue.
Can I ask a, a question from just everybody's perspective here? Um, on the solid fencing, is the concern the property to the south or is the concern in general? Just asking the board where, where their concern is, do they have a focus to the concern or not?
Charlie? So yeah, Mr. Chad, to give you perspective. So I think Mr. Nussor put, uh, testimony on the record, obviously to the north. It's owned by the township, but I think it might be open space and there's also a lot of environmental restrictions. Also to the east, there's, you know, a tributary that has a three hundred foot riparian zone. You know, no one's going to be building there. Really, it's the property to the south that we're, we're talking about. Um, you know, a, a, and like I said, you know, this board I know has had some history with sound studies and has been, uh, you know, uh, things have been misrepresented to the board and the board has, uh, you know, run into some issues in the past. I think we're just trying to take some additional precautionary steps just to make sure that the board and the applicant is covered on this. So that way, uh, like I said, um, you know, everything is, uh, copacetic going forward.
This, Mr. Chair, I just spoke to my client. They're willing to install solid, a solid fencing of some kind.
Okay. I want to say my, my question was if it was a concern to the south, not to belabor this after Mr. Yoskin's proffering, that if the concern was to the south was to limit the solid fencing to the south, not put it on the north. Um, I think it would actually be more effective for the property to the south if we did that, but I leave it to the board.
Charlie, acceptable?
Yeah, I think that's acceptable. Like I said, I wasn't looking to, uh, put an enhanced burden and do the whole entire fencing of the compound. But I think to the south, you know, with some returns, you know, maybe twenty or thirty feet going north, uh, 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 on the two sides, I think would be more than sufficient.
Excellent.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mertens.
Um, Charlie, um, would there be any, oh, well, maybe the applicant, the engineer for the applicant can answer this. If we do a solid, is that going to be an issue with any fire? Um, there, there was an issue with that with the, you know, fire department.
No, and I think that's the benefit to doing this on just the, the south side of it. It kind of balances all these different concerns that everybody has about visibility into the site. We're going to be able to maintain that because we'll still be chain link on the north side where the gates are, the gates will be chain link. People can see before they.
I think as long as it's just on the south, that's, that's fine with me. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I believe we were in questions from Charlie. If I'm not mistaken, is how we've gotten here.
Yeah, let me just, uh, try to wrap it up a little bit more quickly. So, um, we talked about the sound, we talked about the units. Um, the two site access gates, you got a knock box on the one. Do you have any issue just adding one to the second one, Chris?
Uh, I, I'm showing one on each. So no, um, if it's, if it didn't come through on the plans, if I'm looking at something that's more up to date.
So, so there's, there's two gates, uh, like at the north part of the compound. There's the one coming from the solar field, and then there's a second one entering.
This one here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. We can add a, add one as well.
And then I just asked, obviously, since this is a lease pars, uh, part of the parcel that, um, the O and M manual be recorded by deed and it's just strictly, you know, uh, clarified who's responsible for the maintenance of the, the compound. I know there's not a lot of traffic, but I just asked that, that, uh, um, be done. And then as far as the, the applicant did state, obviously they got their NGDP, P permits, they got the FHA verification, individual permit. Um, there was required mitigation plantings because they're in that outer hundred fifty feet of the three hundred foot. I just asked, and I think Sherry had the same comment, that they revised the landscaping plan to include the mitigation plan, just so it's easier from a construction perspective for the township to make sure that all that gets installed. Um, and then Month County Planning Board issued a memo. Chris, you guys are going to address all their comments as a, a condition of any approval.
Yeah, so just really quickly, we actually didn't have a landscaping plan at all in here because where we're located in the site. So incorporating that plan into here, I think is, is perfectly fine. Um, the Knox box, the Knox box, what was the one after Knox box you had?
Uh, just recorded the O and M manual by deed.
I believe we, Neil, did we not already record the?
We did. We did, and we've, we've provided proof of recording.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, we had done that, so we can reprovide it just to make sure you have it. Uh, and what was the last item again? Sorry, I went.
Planning board, I think you guys, they issued a memo. You guys have been working with them.
There's one item left where they want us to, um, file a deed restriction for their maintenance easement at the front of the property. Um, we're getting that taken care of this week and we should have their unconditional approval.
Okay, and then, uh, real soils, you got their permit too as well, was that pending?
You have certification from them and you should have that in the file. And again, if you don't, let us know, we'll make sure to provide it.
Okay, and then, uh, with the decommissioning report, I just asked that it, uh, be amended to include, uh, you know, removal of the compound fencing and gravel, you know, should this ever be abandoned at some point or decommissioned at some point? And then the last two thing, just plot details, Chris, obviously just update the general notes to indicate the FHA permit verification and permit number. Uh, and then just, uh, update the details to reflect the most current, um, you know, equipment that's being proposed, just so it's, it's clear for the record and, uh, you know, when they go out to inspect their construction, they know what's going in and everything.
Yeah, not a problem.
That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Charlie, just, I'm sorry, going back to the most minor of those things. On, uh, sheet four, which is the site plan, it does show knock boxes at both of those gates.
No, this, he's talking about the third gate, Neil. He's talking about this gate here.
Which gate?
This, so there's three gates, there's, there's.
Oh, I see. Okay, I'm sorry. Got it.
Yeah, yeah, in the event of a fire, you know, everyone's kind of rushing to get there. I just want to make sure that they have multiple points of access and there's no issue with, uh, you know. And, and then if I'm not mistaken, Chris, I believe that the whole compound is monitored remotely for fire and everything, right?
Yes, and that, that gate is an existing gate, by the way. I think I said proposed, but there wasn't existing, oh, maybe that is a proposed gate. There wasn't an existing gate that comes out the, the rear of the site as it is, but I mean, realistically, nobody's entering there. They're going to use the same key from the front, but we'll put a Knox box on there in case we just make access easy. So it's not a problem.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Charles. Jen?
No, the only item that I had was the landscaping plan. I think Charlie covered that. So as long as they provide us with the landscaping plan, I'm good.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Yoskin?
We have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, can I just jump in real quick?
Yes, you may, Ms. Bear.
Um, Mr. Nussor, on the mitigation plan, I, I did ask if you can provide some details. Um, there's just a general note about deer protection. Uh, but nothing specific on the plans and the contractor will probably give me a hard time about that if there's no specifics on there.
Yeah, I'm sure we can, we can take care of that and put that on there. Um, you know, we can reach out to you offline and make sure we put what, make sure it's acceptable to you before we issue anything.
Okay, um, and the only other thing I mentioned in my letter, you know, I know it's not this park, but it's on the site. Um, there is significant landscaping that should be replaced along the main road. Is that something that you could address with the owner?
And I believe this is something that the board, or maybe you had yourself raised as an issue at the prior hearing and I, I know that, um, the applicant has spoken to the owner about it. Uh, Mr. Smith, not necessarily put him on the spot, but he's probably the better one to answer that question than myself.
Yeah, and to that point, uh, we have made them aware of your concerns, their plans up front. I believe you were concerned about some, um, of the trees that it might have failed or, uh, kind of died off in the front.
Right.
So we've made them aware and we're working with them to try and, uh, get that, uh, strained out. Um, I believe they're waiting for the spring to, to kind of get their plantings in, in order, so.
Okay. All right.
You're good, Sharon? Okay. Members of the board, any questions for the professionals?
Sir? No, sir.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Bear, I believe the next step is we're gonna open it to public?
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Not hearing any? Eileen, we're ready to open.
Can I just ask, can I just say one thing? Mr. Moretti looks like he's a member of the public.
Yeah.
Audience.
Yeah, he signed up, he signed up late, so he can't vote, but he can come in.
Yeah.
We want to let him in?
Yes.
He can come in.
He deserved it.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. If anyone has any questions or comments on this application, please use the raise your hand feature. We'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need audio and video. You will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you're calling in, please use star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself. Thank you.
Eileen, Mr. Aguilar is driving or you have someone next to you?
I have two people next to me.
Uh, and do we have anybody that's raising their hand?
No one has raised their hand yet.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that we think are going to raise their hand?
No.
Nobody's raised their hand yet.
I second it. Drake and Kelly Carey, who's Kelly Carey?
She works, she works with me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great.
Carey works with me.
So.
I believe Ms. Chairman Nansen made a motion to close public.
Chairman Nansen made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Eileen, I think we're close to public.
Public has now been closed.
Okay, so. Next steps. Um, you know, Mr. Yoskin, do you have any final comments that you would like to put on the record?
No, uh, no, Mr. Chairman, other than the fact that the, uh, this is an application for final and Mr. Nussor's testimony, uh, supports the standards for the granting of final and he has responded to the concerns of your professionals and to my client has responded to the concern of the board with respect to noise. So we would ask that you approve the application.
Very well. So, Mr. Bear, I'm going to ask the board, what's the pleasure of the board unless Mr. Bear has anything that he would like to, uh, to opine on?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I think it's ripe for consideration. However, the board would like to proceed.
Thank you, sir. Okay, fellow board members, uh, you know, provided that our professionals don't have any other thing, anything else to say.
Nothing, Mr. Say.
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Then, you know, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair? I very seldom get a chance to make a motion. I, I would like to make a motion to approve this based on all testimony that has been put on the record. The findings of facts. The, the any, anything that was dealt with the sound. And just make this a motion. Wow, that's funny.
Out of practice, Wendell.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, also you want to add, of course, what the DEP water, stormwater management approvals and so forth?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do we have a second?
Other outside agencies also.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second the motion. It'll be my first time seconding Wendell Nelson's, uh, motion.
I'll second that as well.
That is great. All right, we have a first and we have a second. Eileen, can we have a vote, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Cantor?
Um, given, uh, yes, given all that all of the conditions offered by our professionals are, and has agreed to by the applicant have been duly, uh, included, yes.
Mr. Hughes?
I would, uh, also like to, to vote yes and just, uh, make mention that I, that I do appreciate the sound mitigation to the south with the, uh, the vinyl on the fence. I think that's a, a, a good, uh, a good answer to that and my vote is yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Oroscow?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Say.
Eileen, I'd like to put on the record that, you know, these batteries, although they went from three to two, I'm sure it's for the benefit of the public utility. That, um, the more research we've been doing over the past year when it comes to ensuring the stability of the sine wave on the lines, um, you know, we're finding out more and more that with solar panels and wind, the wind vanes that, uh, when the voltage drops, the homeowners suffer because the current increases, the life cycle of the HVAC doesn't last as long. And these batteries are put in place to help stabilize and bolster that, that voltage on the line. So from that perspective, I appreciate the applicant and it's win-win situation here, and I vote yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Yoskin, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. So, Eileen, any other business of the board tonight?
I have nothing else.
Well, just wanted to, um, you know, thank everybody. It's never an easy kickoff when it comes to reorganization. Welcome, Mr. Bear. You know, we look forward.
Mr. Say.
We look forward to having a lot of, um, exchange and discussion throughout the year. Sometimes it's not as, you know, as sometimes it's not as easy as it seems. That's what I'll say.
Yeah.
Also, I, I would like to welcome Mr. Bear also and all the professionals and board members. Just welcome back and I, you know, I'm looking forward to another year. Twenty-two now.
Looking forward to it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good job, Mr. Say.
Thank you.
Best of wishes on a successful procedure, Mr. Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
It, it's nice to, to see the other half operate. I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm serious, you know, I, I couldn't do this job without. I'm serious, you know, I, I couldn't do this job without any. Of any of y'all here. But thank y'all.
You're welcome, sir. So Eileen, when's the next meeting date?
Next meeting is, hold on one second, January the. Had it here and I just put it away.
Okay, I may be.
Weeks from tonight.
I have my new ticker by then.
I, I'll be remote at that, at that. On the twenty-fourth, I will let you know if I have issues joining in.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, good thoughts, Mister Chairman Nansen to your procedure and uh, hopefully we'll see your smiling face on the twenty-fourth ticking away.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Check on.
All right, Mertens, Oroscow. All in favor?
Hi, everybody.
Good night, everyone.